It's Monday, November 14th. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Farmington School Board. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. We have a little bit of a deviation. This is normally a work session. We have some items that do need to, we'll have, take some administrative action on tonight. So we've got a kind of a hybrid agenda here tonight. And of course, the first item on that agenda is approval of the agenda. So everyone's had a moment or had some time to take a look. Are there any items to add, remove, or other questions about the agenda? If not, may I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dettinger, second by Doyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's passed. We have an agenda. The first item on the agenda is a consent agenda. I need to get to my note. The consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with a single motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the consent agenda and it will be acted upon separately. Does anyone have an item they wish to discuss? Seeing none, can I get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Doyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is passed. We will now go into our work session discussion topics. The first item up are some updates from the Finance and Long Range Planning Committee. First item is substitute teacher pay and the second item is the guiding change document for budget realignment conversations. Steve or Jaclyn, who wants to lead off?
I'm trying to get to it right now. I apologize. If you want to kick it off, Jaclyn, feel free.
I am.
I can help too.
It's equally prepared.
If you would like, I could.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
So one of the things that actually came up probably about three, four weeks ago was the topic of substitute teacher pay. Mary Ann, our HR director, has been involved pretty closely with the, the other HR directors in the metro area. And one of the topics of been, of discussion has been the daily rate of pay for substitute teachers. And over the past probably two and a half weeks, a majority of the districts south of the river have increased their pay from, you know, anywhere from 130, what it was at, to 165 to 200. And so in talking with our administrators and beginning to look at our, our fill rates, we're becoming concerned about the amount of times that we rely on other ways to fill daily absences with our teachers. And actually, I can, I can run through kind of some data and stuff like that if, if people are okay with that. I threw some of the stuff that we've, we've taught, we've shared with the board in Friday notes and some different things. So here's our current reality. So if you, if you look, our fill rate, which is the percent of times a absence is picked up by a substitute, and this is just for teachers. And we can talk about paraprofessionals and some of those other openings that we have. But this was just strictly with the, the teachers to start with. You can see that September, the fill rate's about 75, you know, 73, 75%, which makes sense. We don't have a high percentage of people out early on. So it's, it's easier to fill when you just have less absences. As we get into October, you can see that's dipped below 70%. And in October, we actually had 11 days below 70%. And then I just changed this because we had a high of 18 unfilled absences. And that was in, at the end of October. And then Friday was a really busy day, especially for a couple of elementary buildings in terms of trying to scramble and fill. We had 22 unfilled teaching positions on Friday with a fill rate of 56%. Our current rate of substitute teacher pay in the district is $74 for a half day and 143. And Mary Ann's not here. We, we raised this, I can't remember. It's been.
I thought it was 16 or 17.
Yeah, around 2016, 2017, we raised it. I think we were in the $120 range, something like that. So it's been fairly consistent. So what do we do when we have an unfilled teacher absence? Well, the first thing, right, you know, teacher is going to be gone. They put it into our automated system and it creates an absence. Our number one thing that we'd like to have happen is that that absence is picked up by a substitute teacher. If it goes unfilled, we have some flexibly, we have some flexible use of other staff to help supervise. Again, that's dependent on, on the level. Clearly, elementary buildings are different than the middle schools and different than the high schools. But we can flexibly supervise kids in different ways. And to be honest with you, if we didn't have that flexibility, or we'd be in much dire circumstances than we are right now. In the elementary, they will split up classes with other teachers. So if they have a four section, you know, grade level and a teacher's gone, they'll take those learners from the section where the teacher's gone, they'll split them up with the other teacher. There's still a cost to that, that, that is part of our contract. So it's, it's, it's not, it doesn't, it's not free. There's still an additional cost to the district for that. We will utilize, utilize other staff. We'll utilize our instructional coaches. We'll utilize interventionist, our multilingual teachers. And then we will utilize administrators. And on Friday, I know in Riverview, it was all of that and they still had some classes that weren't covered. And then we will also fill absences out on an hourly basis with teachers on, on their prep. When that happens, as part of our contract, it is $60 an hour for each time that that is filled. So I, I think sometimes, you know, there's a thought of, hey, can you be more innovative in the approaches and things like that? The reality is when it comes to, you know, filling in for absences, it's really about people for a lot of, lot of the time. And how do you provide supervision? Our hourly sub costs now, when we have to fill with a teacher on their prep, you can see it's, it's, it is a much more expensive model than being able to get a substitute teacher. So in the elementary building, based on how their schedules are built, it costs $300 a day compared to the 143. So it's an additional 157. In the middle school, it's $360. So that's an additional 217. In the high school, it's 240, which is additional 97. If we raised our teacher, our daily sub rate to 175, and that was just an arbitrary number that we thought was kind of not the lowest, but not the highest, but got us into the ballpark, you can see we would still, quote unquote, I'll use air quotes, save money compared to relying on hourly sub rates. So at the elementary, it's, it's not quite a two for one, but you'd save $125. At the middle school, it's significant, 235. And at the high school, it's $65. Subs, we, we have to remember that, you know, this isn't the same as going out and hiring staff for full-time positions. We really don't have an issue for that when we have teacher openings. For a majority of our position, when we get to our specialized positions, some special ed positions, some other positions, it's a different story because of licensure and things like that. But for a majority of our teaching openings, we get a good pool of candidates and we don't have trouble hiring. And that's the same thing with our administrative positions. But substitute teaching is quote unquote, you know, free agency, right? You know, we have a number of subs that are dedicated to our district. They like, they like the familiarity. They like, you know, kind of quote unquote, how we go about business and things like that. And they're very loyal to the, to us. There's other people that will look and, and say that, well, if I have to drive 10 more miles or 15 more miles and I can, you know, make an additional, you know, 25, 30 bucks over the course of five days, it might be worth it. So just to give you some perspective of what other districts are currently paying. So you can see we're at 143. Lakeville's at 145. There is some tiering too that districts are doing. So if you sub in a district for more than 10 days, they'll bump that up. I didn't, we didn't even put that in here because we don't have the people in our finance department to be able to do that. A single fee is, is what we can handle. So I didn't even get into that mix. ISD 196 is around 165, but on Fridays, they do give it, they bump that to 200. Again, you know, if you're a substitute, you do have the freedom to say, I'm just going to work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And the thought is to try to maybe entice some of those people and, and get them into buildings on Fridays with a bump. Northfield, 200. Hastings, 175. And as I said, there's a tier to Perroch in some of those districts. And then, you know, the, the hard part about this is trying to quantify what the additional cost to the district would be. So I forced Jane to do some quick and dirty math, which she does not like to do. But I twisted her arm and she did it anyway. So we came up with an approximation based on sub usage last year in a similar timeframe. Now, we, we came up with a ceiling. We don't believe it would be any higher than $130,000 if we implemented this. And to be quite honest with you, that's probably high now because that was based, when we were first started talking this about three weeks ago. But it gives, or it gives us that time. The more difficult thing is to determine, you know, what savings you would actually get back by not relying as heavily on your hourly subs. And I go back to that other slide where you talk about the amount of money. You don't know that. We feel like our ministers feel like they would recapture some of the people that they've started to see that are, that have been pretty loyal to us, would probably come back. So you would offset that some, but it's hard to determine that. One of the things that the Finance Committee asked us to do is write, so if it is actually a $130,000 cost and you're looking at, you know, potentially budget reductions and a budget deficit, you know, how can you cover that cost? Well, one of the things that we've been pretty diligent in doing is as positions have come open throughout this year, we've looked at them really hard and say, is this going to be a position that we potentially may not have after this year? And if it is, then it's just a good time to not fill that instead of fill it with somebody and then potentially reduce that. So we've done that with a few positions. And then also, you know, we, we've talked about this a little bit, but not a lot. I mean, you know, paras, we've talked about paraprofessionals and a number of paraprofessional openings that are across a district. Well, as those sit open, those are budgeted, they haven't been filled. It's quote unquote, a savings or a reduction there. So we feel pretty confident that, you know, through that unfilling of certain positions and not being able to fill other positions, we'd be able to account for that $130,000 that it potentially could be. So those are the things that, you know, we talked about, we shared with the Finance Committee. Stephen Jaclyn asked a bunch of good questions. I tried to answer them in, through this. But, you know, I, I know that as we head into kind of the, the cold and flu season that, you know, our, our, the, the filling of vacancies is going to be, continue to be at the forefront, you know, especially for our building administrators. And just as a reminder too, last year, so you think last school year, actually think two, two school years ago. So we actually hired basically on-call subs. I don't know, we maybe had, what, how many of them did we have?
Two per building?
Two per building. So we had two per building. So we had, you know, I mean, 15, 16 that were there that could be assigned. When we came into last year, we did, we didn't begin the year with that. So we went through September to see how things were. And then we got to about the October and we're like, holy cow, right? This is going the wrong direction pretty quickly again. We had started to recoup some of the subs that we'd seen go away prior to COVID. You know, some people just made a decision, I'm not coming back into buildings with all the things that were going on. We see, we started to see some people coming back. We did have some federal dollars again that we did use to bring back those building subs. I don't think we brought back two per building, but we brought back one per building to offset that. So I know it feels like, well, this is just kind of coming back, you know, and that, that, it's true, you know, to a certain point. But we were in a similar spot last year and just had some different things that we were able to do. And to be honest with you, even if we were to do something like this, this is still going to be an ongoing thing for our buildings. Because there's, it's, it's a, it's a workforce problem. And, you know, now we, we also are beginning to see the economy turn a little bit. We know when the economy turns and other industries begin to lay people off, which is not a good thing. That does potentially help our sub pool.
Now, didn't we pay, we paid $200 for the subs because we had the federal money?
We.
I believe.
Yeah, and we had to do, but we also had to do some benefits and some things like that with it.
For the float subs due to the contract agreements.
Okay. Because I did talk to some subs about that. And that's kind of where this whole, my understanding is where this whole thing started. Because there are some subs that wanna, aren't going anywhere. Because they love, you know, the principals and the schools. And there are subs that are going other places. But it was interesting to say that they were, they did not know that, they thought we paid $200 based on the former year. But then they came back to me and said, they thought it was going through and getting approved the night of that board meeting. And I'm like, that never took place because we pulled it from the agenda. So that somehow got out to all the subs that this was going through somehow. So.
Yeah, the, the float subs were almost, I mean, you, you think of them like, I mean, teachers. I mean, they basically were put on a very similar type of contract and through that whole process where that came from. And there, there's, there's good and bad things about that too. Because typically what they did is they took people that were subs in their building that they were using anyways. But we just, we, we could always count on it. We had, we knew. And, you know, then the principals would start the texts at 5:30 a.m. about, hey, I'm short. And they started, you know, horse trading people and things like that. So.
They saw it for any position, including paras too, which was.
Well, when it, so if there was no teacher, if they didn't need.
Priority.
Yeah, teachers. And then again, right, there were times when, then they, we, they put them where they needed them. Yep. So I mean, and there are districts that have gone to that type of model where they've hired, you know, building subs, district subs. But now you're talking, to your point, a whole different additional cost into that. Because you get into, you know, the daily rates higher, but there are also, there's benefits and there's other things that come along with it that potentially people might want, that you have to incorporate into that.
So what, what did Lisa, what did Lisa say? Do we do have an on-call sub?
No, we don't.
For rebuilding?
We don't. We did last year.
Okay.
And then that was part of the, again, when, when we knew we didn't have, you know, as much federal money, thinking we'd be in a better place, that was one of the things that we reduced or didn't bring back.
Okay.
So we started, so two, two years ago, each building had two. Last year, each building had one.
Okay.
And we started that in October-ish.
Okay. So finance, what, what did you guys chew through?
Well, the biggest challenge, since we are in a deficit, is where's the money come from? And I know that they worked numbers last week on that of where we could save. But again, I'm just weary because we're in such a deficit. We're in a hole. You know, and then I look at, we have other contracts that are open. So we give money here, the perception is we have money to give there. It, it just, it's, is it needed? Yes. There, there's no question about that. It's just a matter of how we would fund it, is the challenge I'm having as a thought process of putting that through. Because remember, if we rob from, I mean, every, every district, if we rob from one other district, it's, it's a domino effect wherever you go on it.
Yeah, I think when we talked, the question was, right, I mean, you potentially have these, these positions that you aren't going to fill or haven't filled, right? And that, that potential savings carries forward to your bottom line. And so you balance the fact, do you invest in that now to hopefully, you know, make things, make things more operational in your building to get through the year? Or do you carry it forward and have less that you have to deal with next year? I, I can tell you our administrators would advocate for, this is, they feel like this is an operational need. It's difficult to, you know, and then to Steve's point, you know, we talked about, well, why, you know, why not some other? Well, one of the issues, you know, you could take a look at your paraprofessional subpay and that might be something that we want to do. But we can't even fill our paraprofessional positions, you know? So we thought this would be a starting place.
Go ahead.
No, you go.
The question that comes to mind, so you say, you know, the, the potential cost of this is a hundred and high. The ceiling is a potentially $130,000 additional cost. But that assumes that, I'm assuming that there's a pretty huge dependency around that on fill rate. So if the fill rate's very low or continues to be in the 50 to 60% range versus the 70 to 80% range, the cost of doing nothing could be $130,000 and we just wouldn't have taken action on it.
Well.
It could be, it could be much higher, right?
Yeah.
So we have the same problem.
Yep.
Whereas, how are we paying for this or how are we paying for that?
And I think that when we talked about it, and I think you put that very well. I think the, the question is, what is it, what does it cost to do that? You can kind of, Jane can kind of figure that. I think the bigger question is, what's the cost if you don't? And that's the one that, that I would love to be able to quantify.
That's got to be driven by a fill rate.
Yep, the fill rate and back to, you know, this slide where you look at, this slide where you look at where you're predominantly filling in. Now, the other thing too, as we have not been able to fill our parapositions, that means our teachers have filled additional positions as well. So additional lunch duties, right, additional recess duties and things like that. And then, you know, giving up your prep is just another thing on top of that. And people are willing to do that, you know? But again, depending on it, I think becomes difficult for the whole system.
Depends on when it becomes a grind.
Yep.
And you, we, we kind of looked at these costs for these other districts when we picked 175, right?
Yeah, that, we thought that instead of being the lowest, I mean, kind of put it somewhere in the middle.
Okay.
In, in the grand scheme of things, I mean, you know, the, the, going from 165 to 175 really, I mean, it was negligible. And you were bumping the number.
Well, and I, you know, I looked at those numbers too and I, maybe it's the, but I would want to posit, if we're going to do, if we are going to do this, I, I would want to position ourselves well. So maybe 175 isn't the number for me. I mean, if Lakeville's doing 185, I look at it and go, then let's do 185, right? But my, my larger concern here is, since we're sitting on this equation of how we're going to balance this deficit, shouldn't this be incorporated as a factor into that larger consideration? I, I don't know if I'm comfortable today. So I know we need to do it and I, I want to do it. But I don't know how I can do that today if I don't realistically know where's everything else going to sit. I, I don't know.
I think the other part you brought up that is, and I'll use the analogy, Flagstaff and 50. If you're going to do it, do it right. Okay? So if we're going to do this to do it right, I, I would go with what the surrounding districts would do for the pay. To your point on that, so I, I, I think if we're going to do it, do it right, would be a suggestion on that.
Yeah. Can you tell me more about what, what?
Well, I just, you know, from where I'm coming from, I, I feel like it's a little irresponsible for us to say right now, okay, let's invest in this when we're sitting on the challenge of this entire picture of how we're going to balance it. In a, in a perfect world, as we're dealing with these numbers and, and trying to make this math equation work, this should be high on that priority list. I, I completely agree. But there's all these other priorities and where are we going to compromise? Where is it going to come from? Are we in a position to say yes to this right now, knowing we don't really have the full picture of, of the action we need to take?
Yeah. So I think that's, for me, that's two things. There's still the unknown cost of not doing anything. So if they're filling in with the higher hourly rate and our fill rates are low, there's a potential that doing nothing actually costs more than, or somewhere between net nothing and the $130,000 or more, right? So we could, we could increase subpay by this recommendation and have an educated guess that it's going to increase our overall costs by $130,000. Or we could not take action on it and still run those additional costs. It seems to me that's probably a coin toss. Based on stress on facilities right now, stress on current staff. And, but then you're also, we're also potentially running the risk of having to see, you have disrupted operations as a result too. The other hard part is like, this is one of those challenges we got in my, my day job all the time, right? How do I make this decision if I don't know this, but on the same, on the same token, I have to make this decision right now? Right? So I don't know that we have the luxury of the, the, the year or the six months that we would want to take, to make a call like this, right, and, and put it all in.
I don't know if I'd agree with that.
I, that's fair.
Because, I mean, to make a financial decision, you got to see all the parameters that's thrown at you on that. And 130,000 is, is a blip in our overall budget, yes. But when our overall deficit to start with was 7.7 million, issue is it's going to keep growing. So where do you hold back and kind of let it roll a little bit and kind of keep managing to it a little bit? I don't know.
Which is back to the other thing, is that doing nothing could also still cost us more than we want to, right? But we don't have the luxury of a boat.
We'll never know that.
We'll never know.
Correct. But then again, if, I'm looking overall scheme, we still have three contracts that are still open. We have other stuff, depending what we do, different reactions are going to take place probably. I, I, I don't know. It's, it's a gamble. It really is.
So I'm going to just find something real quick here.
And because you're saying, I mean, that there's, there's a lot in here that is unknown for us, right? We don't know what the pool is that we're going to need. We don't know it. So.
And that unknown's not ever going to be known. Like it's a.
Right. We'll never have that.
You can't, we can throw random numbers at it and, you know what I mean? You can make scenarios. But from my standpoint, we, you have to have staff in buildings. Like you have to have teachers in classrooms, especially at the elementary level. I'm thinking about that. And having been a sub myself and worked in buildings, it's, it isn't fun for teachers to use their prep time to go sub for other classrooms. And, you know, they're busy enough as it is. So I think this is, we need to.
Yeah. So I think to Kyle, just, I should have put this in the PowerPoint. I apologize. I didn't. So I'm going to read this. So our total teacher sub cost in 2018, 19, so that is pre-pandemic, was about $698,000. Okay? So that's when you had, I mean, everything was the way it was. I'm not going to count 2019 or 2020 because the pandemic and we used some federal money. Last year, even with our, our, our subs, it was $850,000.
Is that including like the teachers using their prep time? That's including any kind of sub-related? Okay.
And so is the $130,000 over the 2018, 2019 or the 2021, 2022 number?
Uh, that was best off of last year.
Off of last year's number.
Yep. So Jane kind of just, Jane basically for last year, correct me if I'm wrong, but took the number of sub days and people we had in, and we just divided it out and then increased it by the, what is it? Whatever, 143, $35 or whatever it is. So like I said, it was quick and dirty. I understand, I, 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 I understand the questions. I think the difficult thing is if we keep using, if we keep going down this, this model right here, it's going to cost us more. Then it's going to cost us more than what we anticipated to pay for our subs.
You anticipated flat for this year? So the budget for sub, if you have a line item for that is roughly flat for this year? If you have a, if you have a line item or budget for subs for 2022, 23, is it flat from 2021 to 22?
I'd have to double check. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Or do we not budget to that level of detail?
We just do an overall, like what are our subs going to cost?
What are you saying, Steve?
Yeah, I was going to say you'd have to have it figured out because if we had the two per school, you would know. And the other thing that bothered me that brought in the Finance Committee is we get this, you know, mid, mid-October, when all we heard about, you know, was paras, paras, paras for the last year. And then all of a sudden, this came up and.
Well, when did the other districts move their salaries up?
I was just going to say that.
Within the last three weeks, three, four weeks.
That's the timing thing there.
Are you?
It's been part of the conversation. I mean, that's what Mary Ann, they've been getting together and. together and.
Yeah, that's what I'd heard, that's what I'd heard anecdotally, I don't know if I'd heard it, I think I'd heard it from you too, but.
I thought it was the beginning of the year, some of the districts already.
Well, I mean, it, it might have, it became a topic of discussion between the superintendents and the HR directors.
In the first half of October, right?
And it, it's a, I heard you say, I mean, we, we have a people challenge, right? And so we have all of these districts who are all vying for the same people. And so in order to try to do that, we're all playing games with the numbers to try to pull them in.
Yeah, the hard part of this, the question I'd kind of written down here, I mean, is there, I mean, I think they're doing that to draw more substitutes into the pool, right? But are, I, I, I will hope they're actually drawing more substitutes into the pool rather than just poaching from other districts around them, right? Because once we, once we match suit, you get into it.
It's, it's, it's yes and.
It's not great language, but I mean.
No, you're, it's yes and.
No, but I can, I would probably go out on a limb and say that if someone is subbing in our district, they're subbing in the five surrounding districts, so like, cause that's what I did too. And so, yeah, if they have two offers from two different districts on a Friday.
We, they're gonna go to.
Regardless of whether or not they like our district better.
Sure.
Yeah.
And for our, our administrators, where this started to become a bigger concern for administrators, and again, you're right, after, you know, we're into the year, was when some of the people that had been pretty consistent subs were now giving, giving days back and going to other places. That's when it kind of rang a bell for them. And again, it isn't everybody and it isn't everywhere, but I, you know, I think the thought and hope would be that you retain, you know, the people that have been, you know, loyal and committed to you and, and you might bring in some additional people and you might bring people in from other districts, cause there is some of that too, that, that happens. So it goes back to its free agency.
Sure. So next step here, I don't know if there's other issues, I know, I, I, yeah, my, my, my sense of this is there's a coin toss and it's a bet and a gamble which direction you go on this, but one way or the other, I think it's prob, it seems like it's, one way or the other, whichever direction we go, it's gonna cost us more money to, to manage the substitute issue. It's just whether or not we're gonna take accountability for the cost or whether we just let it happen to us, right? So that's, that's how I am digesting this conversation right now.
So like you, you know, this is a no-brainer for you, but is it a no-brainer from a finance perspective? You know, from a, from a finance committee and knowing where we sit and everything, is that, is this doable?
I think we're split on that, Jacqueline. I say, from a finance standpoint, I, I don't, it's tough when you're, our total deficit was seven point eight million or whatever, and we already moved some money over. I, I struggle with it, cause again, we, we're gonna have some other things coming up that we have to.
How many, how many open positions does it, of unfilled positions cover this cost? Is it one or two? Three? You said you're not filling, you're not filling existing positions or there's.
Oh, it depends on what, it depends on what position it is. It all depends and stuff, so.
But, I mean, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, is that like three paras, like what's the?
Well, if you're, if you're talking teachers, you know, it's like one and a half, you know? So if, if you're talking teachers, it's like one and a half, two, just depending upon, right? You know, but it's a mix, right? It's not, it's not just all teachers.
Multiplied by four, I mean, I would get four, but not ten.
Multiple different positions, so.
More than four. Yeah.
Well, but it's, it's a com, again, it's.
Significantly, Kyle.
Yeah, but yeah, but again, right, we're looking at a combination of positions, we're not just.
It's not one specific.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what.
Yep, the balance and stuff.
And did, is, is the combination of those positions and knowing that we're going to use them to make up this difference, has that been factored into our logic for our, our overall deficit?
Well, that's been, that was part of reasons of not filling some positions when people left.
Okay.
Knowing that we potentially will be making decisions down the road.
Our next finance meeting's Wednesday of this week, so.
So that brings us back to what are next steps here? Do we need, I mean, I, I think your intention is for us to bring this to a vote at the business meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Well, we just need to know.
Let me ask you this question before you answer that. We're coming into the finance meeting on Wednesday, hoping, hopefully with some new stuff, okay? And I, I know the, the game that's being played now is to state how much they're gonna give us and the numbers, we have no idea on. Maybe Wednesday, would we have a better idea of things like that, where we could say, okay, now?
Yeah, I mean, I, Steve, to your point, I'm not real comfortable with the lack of specifics here either, and I think that's what you're asking for, right?
Yeah, so here's the, I mean, the diff, ultimately, the difficult thing with this, it's school finance. I mean, I don't wanna, I'm not, not trying to sound flippant, but it's, it's school finance. I mean.
No, but I think the specifics are on like, how much mon, like how many, you could say we have a certain number of unfilled positions, but like.
Yeah, well, no, but I understand, well, I understand that, but still, the whole thing goes to, I mean, we started out in August with a model, put things in the model. That thing keeps changing, you know, and it's probably going to change. And so that is the difficulty when really trying to pin down, to your question, Sue, right? What's the overall, you know, financial picture of that? It, I mean, it's changed, I think it's changed significantly in the last, you know, three weeks about some things that still we need to dig through and, and different things like that.
Is this the aid formula that you mentioned in Friday notes?
Potentially, yeah. And some other things. So there's some things that we still need to dig through, but, you know, ultimately, I'll go back to, and I understand everybody's concerns, cause we have, I mean, we, we spent a lot of time on this too. This is, this is an operational thing. I hate to say it, and we don't even know if this would, you know, would, this will impact, but we know we're not, we're, we're not getting in the game right now with it and.
Yeah, and I think.
Our buildings aren't gonna be able to handle a lot of days like Friday for Riverview.
Yeah, and I don't mean, and I think there, I, I, I understand there's a lot of influenza-like illness, I think influenza and RSV are going through a number of buildings right now, I've heard that, right? From a number of places. I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at too is that if we get to a point where we're shutting down schools because we didn't raise the subpay, that's on the board and that's on the administration for not coming to a decision.
But if we raise the subpay, does that, how, how potentially is that gonna, and again, I'm probably asking questions that we actually don't know any of the answers to, I understand that. But if we raise the subpay, how is that gonna give us more people? Cause we, we, we have all acknowledged that to a certain extent, it's a people issue.
It's more people coming in, right?
I mean, right, it's a potential.
Yeah, we won't know. I mean, we're running the risk of, I mean, it's, and that's why it goes back to, I think.
I'm trying to put the risks on the table, because right now, everyone, we're focused on the hundred and thirty thousand, the known risk. There's the unknown risks that also need to be just as clear to us right now, that if we're shutting down classrooms because we don't have subs and we had an opportunity that we needed to, I'm just saying, the public and the, our, our, our staff, our, our parents, they're gonna look to this conversation right here, right?
What was the impact of Riverview as an illness overall?
Yeah, we're just sick, I mean, just.
Lots of sickness.
Yep. And we, and I should say too, like, we limit the number of people out of buildings for personal leaves, right? That's cap.
Yeah, you said that.
We don't, we don't, you know, we work our hardest, no professional development on Fridays and Mondays, days like that. I mean, if we have people that are out at professional development and they can't get filled, we bring them back. So we do some of that stuff as well. And I think that's why this is really hard, because the question, there's two, there's risks in both and, you know, and it's always, you know, it's always, what's the risk of doing nothing? That's always a, a tough one.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, but it's the easiest one to overlook.
But if we're stealing from another place, it's still gonna be the shortage to, to the statement you made, a little too strong, I think, on that, because that's not a fair statement to say, that's all. Because.
Which statement?
That, you know, we're, we could close schools, there's a potential closing schools because of the lack of subs.
No, I'm just saying, that's, that's a potential of not having subs, but if we're not, and if we're having too, too high fill rates and subpay is part of the reason why our fill rates are so low and we're unable to staff those positions, that puts operations at risk.
Right, but you're stealing from other districts too, so.
They're stealing from us right now.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, so it's a false truth.
And we know that, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's not a false truth, but it's a hard, it's a hard, it's a hard, it's an.
Cause if we raise it, we still may not get subs, we're still below others.
Correct, I get it.
So do we use, now are people gonna come back to say, well, you're wasting the money? I mean, it's a double-edged sword on that, Kyle's what I'm saying. Do I think we need it a hundred percent? Yes. If we weren't such a hole, be a whole different conversation, that, that's all I'm trying to say.
And I respect all of those, I really do. I really respect all those questions.
And that, that for me is what makes me super uneasy is, right? So we have this math equation and we have this challenge and, you know, when we're talking about making this kind of an investment and we're spending, you know, we wanna spend that money, it makes me a little uneasy, however.
The last thing I'll say is like, if we just, if we raise it and people don't come, it doesn't cost us anything.
It's true.
It increases a little bit for the few that we have. The only thing I'm gonna say, then we go to this, where we're filling with hourly subs and you can, we're gonna spend money anyways. We're gonna spend money anyway. So, and again, we won't know the direct impact of, does it impact our fill weight, fill, fill rate until you, you get to that, so.
So then, if we, if we make that consideration carefully and if you look at these rates at these other districts, is one seventy-five the right number?
I, we felt like it was, but I mean, we can, we could, here's what we could do, can I make a suggestion? I mean, we are meeting on Wednesday, we could kick a few, a few more of these questions around and do some other things and, you know, we can evaluate then whether or not, you know, if there's additional questions that need to be answered. We would, I think our administrative team would like to bring something to the board to either approve or not approve at the next meeting. Because again, you're, we're, we, we were hoping to do this three weeks ago and I understand the want for more information and things like that. So now we're almost a month out and we can't turn this around until a pay period. So this actually wouldn't take effect until, I think, December fifteenth, right? That December fifteenth pay period. So even on this timeline, it's still, you know, a month and a half out or a month out before it would go, so.
My suggestion would be then to do it for what our neighboring districts are gonna, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right.
We can have that conversation on.
But I mean, I'm just throwing that out since we have two people that are.
Steve, so what are you saying, one eighty-five?
Well, I think what you're saying is that the finance committee needs to work out the specifics and then bring the resolution to the next meeting.
Correct, but I just wanna make sure between you two though, that we're kind of going down the right path, that's all, Kyle, because I guess you guys aren't in those meetings. But yes, Sue, I'd rather do it right the first time if we're gonna do this and look at it and look at the actual numbers.
If, if y'all are, right, and we can make, and Jane's happy, like I always look at Jane's eyeballs and that makes me feel a little bit better. So if we, in this equation, can make everything, I would feel much more comfortable positioning ourselves at, at one eighty-five since Lakeville is right next door. Cause if we're gonna, if we're gonna play this game, let's play it, but.
Well, but let's hope it doesn't turn into a game, that's the.
Well, that's the unknown part.
Right.
All right, so just to recap, we've had a lot of good conversation here, but I think the consensus is that you have your finance meeting on Monday.
Wednesday.
Sorry, Wednesday, today is Monday. You will work out additional kind of specifics to bring a resolution to the meeting on the
Could I, could I ask a more question?
No.
Okay.
Of course.
If we didn't have this much discussion, could this have been approved this evening?
Well, not really, no, no, no.
Okay.
I mean, it.
That's what I heard.
No action can be taken on an item at the same meeting, so that's.
Thank you so much.
Is that open meeting law or is that, it's one of the rules governing?
I just, it doesn't make sense. I mean, it, I mean, unless something really crazy happened, I think you could, but I think.
Okay.
Yep.
Here.
Okay. So the next item on the work from this group then is the budget alignment guiding change document?
Yeah, we talked about this and, and actually we, so this is just a starting point because we, we spent majority of our last meeting talking about the sub piece, so we didn't get deep into this. So this is a work in, in, work in, progress, there we go, I'm losing my brain here. It's a work in progress as we begin to, to kind of codify what it's gonna look like as we make those decisions around how do we realign. So we just wanted to give the board kind of a first look at this and this will be something that we continue to add, especially as things become more clear in terms of where we're gonna actually land with that final target through some different things, so. It's pretty raw right now.
No, but thank you for putting it together though.
So what's our timeline for this?
In terms of?
This, I'm assuming is part of your conversation on Wednesday as well?
Yeah.
Budget realignment? Okay. Any other comments on what's in here now? I mean, do, is there a work session topic to come back to this or is this? One of the things I know that we, that we talked about in October was the pathway to getting to more specifics sooner. You know, I look, we've got a couple of school board members who are, you know, excited to be here, or soon to be school board members who are excited to be here. I remember where we, where I was at in twenty fifteen when levies were being pushed forward and not a lot of specifics were really pushed into the public domain, like in a proactive way, probably until around March or April. And we're in that sort of same flight plan right now. It was frustrating, and I remember the frustration at the time, not just my own, but in the community. And I know that it's gonna take them, you know, they're, they're whip smart, but it's gonna take, I don't know, at least eight weeks to get up to speed on some of these things. And so I don't, what we're, where I think when we talked in October, we wanted to start getting was more specifics around where are these cuts gonna, where's the alignment gonna come from? What are the types of decisions? What are the types of, because at the end of the day, then the public engagement committee needs to start thinking about how do we engage the public into that conversation too. And I understand the hesitancy about, I think what you've said before, Jason, is people feeling like there's a target on their back. I completely respect the human dynamic there, but at the same time, we have so much work to get done and we meet, you know, a couple times a month. And so I wanna know, like, where is this, like, where are we at in the flight plan to get more specifics so that we can start and they can start off on the right foot when we get into January next year? The other side of this too is maybe a little cynical, right? And cynical in the good way, because all of the, much of the way to solve this issue is sitting in St. Paul right now. Inaction in the spring led to a lot of this situation we're in right now. We've got a new legislature and a governor who's been reelected, who have promised a whole lot of things, and they're sitting on a lot of money that could help solve a lot of this if they just covered the special education cross subsidy. Simple, doesn't require more programs, doesn't require anything, the money's there. And the cynical side of that is, we need the public to be engaged in conversations with our legislators and their legislative leaders. engaged in conversations with our legislators and their legislative leaders. And they're, we're not going to get there unless we really start engaging the community about what the potential impact of lack of action in St. Paul is doing on our property taxes in our school district here in Farmington. Right? So that's why I say it's cynical in a good way. Because the timing is, we can't, if we wait until March, they'll have already made their agendas and they're spending decisions. We need the public to be engaged around this on the legislative side sooner. Which puts more pressure back on us to get to a level of granularity that we're just not there yet. So I've just talked a lot.
Well, I'm hoping coming out of Wednesday in the finance committee meeting, hopefully it's a quick conversation about subs pay. And then we, we start looking at realignment and stuff. That's what I'm hoping for out of that.
And I really don't want any programs or staff or anyone else to feel like they're just being caught in the middle. We're all caught in the middle of a pretty big problem right here.
Right.
Yep.
Does that make sense? I mean, yeah.
So do we all agree?
I'm just reaffirming, I think what we talked about in October.
You want from us?
Yeah, fine. I mean.
And when, again, I've said this, I, I understand the want and need for that. My experience is that.
Maybe I'm being naive. You can say it.
Yeah. I, I don't think it's being naive. I think it's, it's, it just goes back to understanding that everything we have in the district is personal. And as soon as anything that is personal makes a list and is seen publicly, that, that's going to be harm that's going to be difficult to repair. Even if, even if it lives my worst nightmare, which I hope happens, where we go through this whole process and we don't have to do anything, which could be a potential and things. So I think we can, I think by December we could give some, I mean, some generalities. I'd be hesitant to go much deeper than that at this point in time. But we can take direction from the board. Our administrators are still working through their preliminary stuff as we speak, so.
I feel the pressure that we need more sooner, sooner than March.
Yeah.
You know, and really to help get off on the right foot in 2023 when the new board comes together.
Okay, so then, okay, I'm getting mixed messages and I'm in this meeting on Wednesday. What expectations do you want Jacqueline and I coming out of there with? As, and Sue speak up on this too?
I don't know if it's on Wednesday, but sometime between now and December, when we meet at the last time in December.
Okay.
A bigger, a better sense of parameters. What's in and out of scope? What, because I don't, I don't see like, I put out a non acceptable.
The reason we didn't put a lot on here when you're cutting $5 million, it's everything.
I know.
I mean, I hate to be flip it like that, but you're, I mean, there isn't anything that's out of scope. I mean, you're talking, there's going to be an impact on transportation, right? There's going to be an impact on some way, shape or form, student experiences. There's going to be impact on class size in some way, shape or form. I mean, you're talking about that sort of stuff. And that's why this is kind of, when I, when I shared it, now, the thing is, if things change, right, and that 5 million decreases for whatever reason, and it's not 5 million, it's 4 million, or it's 3 million, or whatever it potentially, you know, could be, or if it goes the, I mean, if it goes the other way, then this kind of just stays that way. Which, and again, we've been very conservative with that. I don't see that happening. But then you can start to put additional things in here that close those guide rails. But right now, I don't think you can put any guide rails on there because I don't think there's anything that's off.
Well, maybe there's a kind of a tiering process too, right? So when you talk about the capital levy from 2015, I know Dan's run through some great examples of, we had an A, B, C, and D list. I, I assume there are low hanging fruit. And I don't, I know you don't like that phrase either, but it's true, right? There are things that, we need to start being able to provide our, the board and everyone else with a sense of like, what are the potential costs? What are the potential trade offs? What's the information? If you think about what a community meeting looks like, what's the kind of information we need to present to the community meeting sometime in Q1 2023? That's the, that's the kind of, that's what I want to get towards.
I understand that. I just think saying like, oh, we needed something by the 12th is, like, I don't want to rush this conversation because I feel like.
By the 12th of?
December, that's our next meeting. Like, that's a month and we're meeting this week. So you want us to meet the week before our next meeting then too, is what, to me, because an hour tomorrow or an hour on Wednesday isn't going to get where you want it to be is what it's sounding like to me. And I want to be thoughtful with this because as soon as you put something on there, you're opening Pandora's box and, and we're going to have people here and we're going to have emails and we're going to have phone calls. And you're going to, you talk about people being worried now, that's just going to cause even more. So I, I really want to be thoughtful. And it's not like avoiding transparency or anything. It's that, it's having like, the most concrete information that we can possibly have before we open it up.
See, and, and I agree 100% with Jacqueline saying, but what I will say with new board members come in, they're not going to get educated in, in that amount of time on, on something like this. We got to have some kind of a plan so then we can pass off the baton. So they have a kind of a general understanding of how we got to that point.
Because what helped me, because I haven't been through this process, but when does this have to, when does it have to be done?
Well, we have a, the budget has to be done in June or July, right? That's when June, the budget has to be done. But you have, we have contractual timelines of things that we need to meet.
So what's, what's the, what's the drop dead date in order for us to meet a June budget?
I thought when we were, when you were reducing headcount this year, it was in April.
Begins in March and goes into April.
So March-ish, April? Okay. And obviously between now and March and April, we have all these unknown things that could occur. And, right, what are they going to fund? And is any, are any of those things going to happen? So, so the, the sense of urgency is wanting diligently to hand this off into a position with new board members coming on board, right?
From my standpoint, it is absolutely. I, I want to make sure that they have a clear understanding of what has been going on up at that point. And then if we hopefully get a bunch of good news, you know.
Yeah. And, and the other side, and the other side of this too, is not just realignment down, after the realignment is a conversation about an operating levy, right? And we increase our chance of success with an operating levy if the public feels like we've been proactive, communicative, and engaging around all of these questions. So that's, that's, that's my end game, is looking out even just past these immediate decisions. Because I want this district to succeed and get the resources that we need to continue serving the students the way we want to serve them, right?
I mean, it is a double edged sword. It's to both Jacqueline and Jason's point on that. Because I sat in those meetings on the school board when all that went down, when Superintendent Haugen presented the, everything and the emails, the phone calls, and everything else. But I thought it was a pretty good message that, guys, this is, we need this. This is what's going to happen if we don't get the dollars. But yes, you do get groups that will come after you, specific groups like that. But again.
So is it, is it a matter of the list, whether that list is now or whether that list happens in March and April?
I think if we make the list now, it's not going to be the same as it is in March.
Because so much can change in between.
So, I mean, we are preparing, so just, you know, like, our work going on and with our admin team is preparing to realign $5.2 million. That is the work that's going on. And that, that's going to be our work to, to begin to identify ways to do that over the.
So this is taking shape for you, right?
Yes, most certainly. It is. You know, I mean, but again, I, I think, you know, I understand the want for transparency and, and those things like that. But it is damaging and it's traumatic if, you know, if it doesn't need to happen. Both in and outside the district. And that's, you know, that's the, again, that's the, the kind of give and take between, you know, timelines and things like that. Because there's no timeline that says you couldn't make those decisions in December, right? Now, again, there's so much that could change. You would, I wouldn't advocate for that. But there's nothing. But, and you, in theory, you could wait until June, but you have timelines that you have to meet for all sorts of contractual things and stuff like that. So you're caught in the middle a little bit. So we are, I mean, we are most certainly working through that process, as uncomfortable it is for our administrators to begin that process.
So when are you comfortable sharing that with the board? Is that the right answer question? I mean.
Yeah. So if I'm, if I'm, or I guess the question I've got is if I'm being too aggressive, I'm willing to accept that feedback. What's, what's the right, and come back and say, what can we do? What can we get to at a point? Knowing that my objectives are to provide that level of communication and transparency and engagement, facilitate a good handoff with incoming board members, and meet all of the other timelines that lead us through the budget process in 2023, thinking even further out to a probable operating referendum in November next year. While we haven't had a vote on that, that's not a certain thing. But we've all seen the tea leaves, right?
Again, I, as a board member going out, or even if I was coming, I hope your expectations as new board members coming in, that I don't just throw anything at you and say, good luck. I, I mean, it, it, it's a huge undertaking. And I want to make sure that we have done everything possible from a finance committee standpoint to make life easier for those coming in and for the current board members. That's all. Because it's going to be a big undertaking come, you know, March and even April. And then if we have to go out to the public and communicate and all that, the questions are going to be, well, you guys had, at least you had an idea back then, what you were going to cut. That, that's all. Either way you do it, it's going to be, it's not going to be a fun environment.
So would the board be comfortable knowing that we've worked through these questions, concerns with the finance committee and the finance committee before the new board members come on, have an understanding that the district does have a plan, they have things in place, and when it's the right time, which I don't know when the right time is, right, to have conversations at the board table, that we would bring it forward?
I would feel absolutely comfortable doing that, knowing that as an outgoing board member, that I did everything that I could do possibly to make it smooth, yes. But then I don't want to make it sound like I'm trying to hide it from my peers, or Jacqueline and I are trying to hide it from our peers either.
No, and, and you have to think that come January, we're going to have at least one new member on the finance committee. So there'll be some definite, like, information sessions that are held to kind of get people up to speed and things like that. So.
I think it's a fair way to go at it, Jane.
Okay.
So then I guess we will provide that.
Is that clear? Are we leaving this clear?
To me, it is, yes.
Finance committee will keep, I mean, keep working through it. It sounds like it'll.
But that's the pressure I feel and I want.
And have it in a place to hand off.
Maybe I'm making this too much of a deal, like I need a, a board conversation or a vote or something like that at the December table. I just want to know that we're moving in the right. Maybe, maybe that's really what I need to say more clearly.
I think you're just a concrete person and you want like, specific examples instead of generalities. And right now, we're on, generalities.
Yeah, that's probably right.
Well, if I'm not comfortable.
It's like we've been working together for two years or something. You're starting to get.
Kyle, I'll be very clear, as a going out board member, I'm not comfortable with this plan. You can trust me on that. Because I got a feeling, good spot leaving, you know. Because I have eight years of hard work in it.
Yeah, you do.
So. And I know that it's not, you know, people might think we're not being transparent and this and that. My gosh, that's not, the furthest from the truth on that, you know, furthest from the truth on that. It's just a matter of, if you haven't experienced that and gone through it, it is a, it's a nightmare. I will tell you.
And I'll go, and I'll just say, like, for the record, for board, for Steve and I on the finance committee, there's not one thing that's been brought up about being cut. Like, nothing specific. So we're not withholding anything. Like, we have not had that conversation.
Yep. And that's what I assured teachers at us. We have not talked about cutting teachers, a, any positions within the district. Just that we do have a deficit. I, I mean, there's no gray area about that. But we're not talking about positions at all at this point. So.
Okay. Hope we exhausted that one?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Our next item on the agenda is a draft policy addressing professional conduct in the district. I want to kind of put together some notes here. A couple of months ago, we spent some time discussing and passing policy pertaining to kind of conduct and expectations of school board members. It was a good and a proper discussion. And I know we have, we, and we now have a policy in place that kind of makes explicit some things that were before implicit, right? Attend meetings. There's other sort of rules of engagement around what happens at the board table and speaking in one voice and things like that. It was, those are things that we all understand as part of them, you know, some of the training going into this and the ways to operate a, a, a public organization like this. And, and so that was, that was what was done. And it was good work. The policy that I'm putting forth here is written with that kind of same intention in mind. From statutes to licensure to our strategic framework and other policies, there are a number of guidelines in today that are implicit. So this doesn't simply, you know, this policy isn't just simply to restate what is in statute, but to provide some clarity around areas where it's become increasingly clear that some direction might be due. In developing this policy, I reviewed applicable statutes. Jason and Lori, thanks for providing me with the, the statutory language around the code of ethics for administrators and teachers. I researched existing 192 policies. I looked at available MSBA model language and also some things what other districts have done. There's not a single good policy. So this is an attempt to write what is a single good policy. The goal here is not to create a laundry list of what is allowed and not allowed, but to provide some clear direction that will better support or support better relationships with students, with families and between all of those who are working within ISD 192. I would summarize that the policy addresses the following areas, which are either not or insufficiently addressed in statutes for other guiding authorities. Broad expectations for professionalism towards learners and families and between other employees, partners and contractors for the district, those items A through C. Affirming respect for dispersed points of view and experiences and placing a priority on objectivity and learning design. Supporting stated instructional objectives. In my two years on the board, I've had, I've redirected many parents and to administrators to address concerns in this area. And while I know there is an informal approach to these concerns, I believe the administration could use some more tools to back it up. And then that's item D. And then item E is ensuring that nondiscriminatory commentary is, ensuring nondiscriminatory commentary and conduct. In recent months, many stakeholders in our community, reflecting some very different points of view, have expressly asked for the board for a statement and policy on this matter. So in short, this policy affirms ISD 192's commitment to providing an educational and employment environment in which all learners and staff are treated with respect and dignity, and where diverse experiences and points of view are honored and valued. In accordance with this commitment, every school district employee should maintain standards of professionalism within the accepted standards of conduct in all interactions with learners, families and other employees, contractors and partners. I circulated this board, this policy draft with board members a few weeks ago or two weeks ago, I think it is now. And if, I think, I think folks have had a chance to review it and ask questions. They've had a couple of informal conversations. So, I mean, I have some next steps in mind, but I wanted to introduce this policy here at the table for Jason, right? Jason's excited about it.
He doesn't like cancer, Joe.
All right. All right. So anyway, are there any questions? I mean, we can read it line for line. I think you could put it up on the screen. I've got a copy in front of everybody too. So I'll leave it there for questions.
I think it was a good policy to, it was warranted to put in something like this.
Yeah. And I, I don't have any questions, Kyle. I, I read the policy and I read all of your referenced policies and your cross references. And no questions from my perspective. So.
Yep. None for me.
Okay. So Jason, do you have any comments or questions? Or, okay. So there's, I think, to enact a policy, we need three readings, right?
Correct.
So the policy committee, you and our Sue and.
And myself.
And you, yeah. Okay. We can send this to the policy committee, or we can just send it directly to the next meeting for a second reading and then a third reading. But I, my, my next steps in mind were probably, probably to send this to the policy committee and then to bring forth, I would hope, for the 11/28 meeting for a, for a second public reading. And then we could bring it to the December meeting for a vote of the board. That's the, that's.
Well, if the policy committee reviews it before the 28th, the meeting on the 28th, that would be the second reading.
That would be the second reading?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Because when we review policies, that's always the first reading.
Yep.
Okay. So we're a little bit out of order, but meeting the requirements.
I don't know, are we set to meet before that next meeting? Okay. Sorry, Lori, I'm putting you on the spot.
It's okay. We are not because December's only one meeting. So normally, we don't review policies, but we certainly can just review this policy.
Okay. Yeah, that would be shortened. Like, it'll be a quick meeting. So.
Okay.
We'll find a time between now and the next meeting to review this as a committee.
Yep.
So we'll see this at the 11/28 meeting?
Yep.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your, for your consideration and review of it in the meantime. And I look forward to any other questions you have. If you want me to pop into that meeting, please feel free to add it to my calendar and I can.
Sounds good.
Address any questions that may pop up in that way. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a couple items of administrative action. Specifically, resolution, we did resolution canvassing returns of votes of the school district election. Jason, are you leading that conversation?
Do I?
Well, do we have to review the data first? Do we, I have not done this before. You did this before I joined, right? So.
I'll defer to Lori. Lori, what do we do?
So Chair Christiansen, board members, before you is the resolution canvassing the returns of votes cast for the November 8th general election. You will see in the resolution the results of all eight candidates. We're, the resolution before you states that Melissa Gorman, Jessica Storey, and Becky Dewildee are, have been elected. are, have been elected as school boards, taking their seat at the first Monday in January or the board meeting thereafter, which would be January 9th.
Okay. If there are no questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the canvassing of election results for November 8th, 2022, school district election as presented.
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Dentinger, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Our next is a resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election related duties. Similar situation, we've got a resolution attached. It really just confirms what Lori just shared with us?
Correct, this is just confirmation. And the candidates will then sign an oath of office and, and then we'll formally have them take their oath in January.
All right, are there any questions? Seeing none, can I get a resolution?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election related duties.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Carrero, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed. Congratulations.
It's official now.
All right, our last area is policy discussion. There's a number of policies here, 417 on chemical use and abuse, policy 418, drug-free workplace and drug-free schools, policy 1003, acceptable use of district technology, policy 1004, consent for publishing student work, and policy, policy 1006, early entrance into school. Jaclyn, are there, or Sue, are there?
Are you doing it?
No, I thought you were.
I'm doing it.
I'm trying to look in my notes, I had notes and I'm.
Do you want me to do it?
Sure, if I'm trying to find my notes, I apologize.
Okay. This is funny, because I wasn't even at this policy meeting. But Policy Committee met on October 27th and reviewed all these policies. Minor changes, although I, I did want to call out policy 417. We looked really diligently at this one and one thing that stood out on this policy was for student discipline, our administrative guidelines for disciplinary action and our building student handbooks, they all kind of work together. And I know I had a conversation offline with Lisa and Chris and it was awesome, because there were some things there that we talked about in terms of alignment in some language and they were working to kind of clean that up, so. So with that policy and aligning all of those things together, I think we're in a really good place for that, so. Other than that, none of the rest of the policies had any changes that affected the intent of those policies. Small language corrections, but that's about it, so.
Okay. I took a breeze through them, I mean, it's, I mean, they're heavily edited, but it didn't look like it was a lot, it was a lot of moving things around.
Yeah.
More than it was substantive changes.
Yeah.
Okay. Steve?
I'm good.
Any questions? All right. So can I get a motion on these policies? Oh, wait, we don't have a, we don't have a vote on this, this is a reading.
They'll act on them at the.
That's right.
At their business meeting.
I'm all out of sorts. So our next item is public comment, but I don't see any, so we won't have public comment this evening. Our next item then is we will go to closed session for superintendent evaluation. Can I get a motion to close the session?
So moved.
Pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D05 to discuss superintendent evaluation.
Sue said it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dentinger, second by Carrero, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.